We'd like to welcome everyone out this evening for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is October 20th, 2025, and it is six, just after 6 o'clock PM. We are going to begin this evening with an invocation offered by Phil Whitbeck, our chaplain of our fire department. Appreciate Phil being here. Then after that, I've asked if Sharon Porter would come forward and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance this evening. So if you please stand for that prayer, and then please remain standing afterwards for that Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we always come with a grateful heart in Thanksgiving for our beautiful day and our beautiful season that we have to enjoy here, the freedoms that we enjoy. Lord, we know that these days ahead of us-
Are sometimes challenging, and we have elections coming that we sincerely ask, Lord, that you would help us be wise in all of our decisions. Thank you for this body that leads us in the city of Caldwell. I just pray, Lord, that you continue to guide them, bless them, and use them. We thank you for this meeting tonight. We give it to you in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Phil and Sharon. Thank you as well for helping us with that. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Counselor Doty.
Here.
Counselor Stodick.
Here.
Counselor Register.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Allgood.
Here.
Counselor Dittenberg.
Here.
Very good. Thank you so much. All council members are present and accounted for. Are there any conflict of interest declarations from any members of the council regarding any items on the agenda this evening? Okay, so there's none there. Then that will move us into audience participation. We do have a few people signed up. So first is, I believe it's Dawn Chew. Is that correct? Forget. So if you please come forward, and if you could state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes for your comments.
I'm just making a presence for my neighborhood. My name is Dawn, D-A-W-N. My last name is Chew, C-H-E-W. Some of you I have spoken with, some of them I have emailed. Being passionate about my neighborhood, being new to this state, and caring about what's going on, and as a neighborhood, our road is atrocious. I have spoken to several people. We've been told one thing, then another thing happens, and then, oh, well, you guys need to have it brought to the topic and for your next meeting on November 3rd, so that research can be done and alternatives to fixing the road. You all have probably heard, if not, a very poorly done job of chip seal and, I'm learning all this terminology, fog coating. Well, we never got the fog coating. We got the chip sealed. Now I'm learning that they used the wrong amount of tar for the amount or the size of the gravel. We now have bald spots from here to kingdom come, because as soon as those temperatures hit 90 and above, and you add a garbage truck, a fire truck, a delivery truck, it's just ripping it up. My section of that development in Sienna Hills is less than three years old. There was absolutely, positively no reason for chip seal. There was nothing wrong with the asphalt. I just wanted it addressed. You guys are now in a 2026 budget, so that means those funds need to be reallocated, and they had better be. I have talked to Bruce in roads, and there are options, and it can be addressed. Yes, I will agree, it now can't be done until next spring. But over a year ago, we talked to Bruce, and they, he brought you options, and you all said no. Well, no is no longer an acceptable answer. My understanding is we're not the only neighborhood, so things need to be put into place, and that's what I'm asking for you guys to address. Sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will actually have this. So please refrain. Thank you. Appreciate that, just to maintain that record. So this actually is going to be discussed this evening. So Mr. Mills is here, so this will actually will be talked with council tonight during this meeting, so.
Okay, from there, what happens, I guess?
So that'll depend, because like I said, it's going to be discussed. Questions will be answered. I'm sure there'll be questions from council, and then there'll be direction given from council as to which, where they wish to go with this item. But it will be discussed this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that on the agenda?
So it is going to be with the, under the old business, if I could get there, the staff updates. So we're adding that in there. They're going to talk about Golden Gate Irrigation District, then also with the chip sealing out at Sienna Hills.
Okay. I do have some comments based on the video that I saw, so I want to make sure we have time to-
Yep, yep, there will be. So, okay. So next is Jean Kreidbring. Thank you for being here, and then you'll have three minutes as well for your comments.
Thanks. Good evening, Jean Kreidbring. It has been interesting listening to the various podcasts of the candidates. The common theme is communication and transparency. In addition, the moderator at the ranch, Matt, keeps repeatedly thanking the candidates, stressing how important and difficult the job could be. I too have expressed the difficulty, not only reading all the bazillion pages in the bi-monthly council packet, but doing background research, formulating questions, understanding what's being presented. But the worst part is having individuals from the public watching your every move, constant analysis of your emails or text messages, and questioning your motives. There are a select few that think because you are elected officials, your every move should be under a microscope. I am truly sorry for their vindictiveness. You live in a fishbowl, and some of you truly do what you think is best for Caldwell. Secondly, though, before I get to my main point, I want to thank the city for pushing back the Kimball Bridge construction after the winter wonderland. That was a smart move during prime time at Indian Creek Plaza with the ongoing parking crunch. And now, I'm standing before you tonight because of a concern with communication and transparency, specifically the annexation party at Farmway Village. I am bringing it up so it is on record. The city of Caldwell had the annexation party only for residents of Farmway Village and city employees. The city paid $4,024 for a food truck, $251.40 for two bounce houses, gave away free passes to the city pool, and had the elections office in attendance to register residents to vote. There are several issues or concerns. Individuals that were not residents nor city employees were in attendance. It was not open to all and any residents of Caldwell. The city-sponsored party was used as a campaign forum with candidates donning campaign attire and paraphernalia on the city's dime, paid by taxpayers. In addition, do all annexations result in a party of this magnitude, or was this simply a first? Now that you have set the precedence, do you intend to offer all of these bells and whistles for future annexations? And where is this in the budget? This particular annexation party sent mixed messages due to the poor communication. Honestly, all the candidates in attendance should have to donate from their campaign funds since they used it as an election stomp. The taxpayers should not be paying for their campaigning and abuse of city funds. I am concerned. The money spent could have been used more wisely for more pressing matters, and there should have been better communication and transparency, along with guidelines for not abusing it for campaigning. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you on that. So I appreciate your comments. Just, just a few comments, and then we'll see. Kyle, I know that you had signed up, but again, that is going to be discussed later, so I don't know if you want to wait until then. But in regards to that event that did take place, it was a first of its kind. We have never, the city has never annexed an entire community before, and I know Counselor Dittenberg can, I'm sure, back up anything that's here. If I say anything incorrect, he can guide us back. But there was over fifty, over 1,500 residents that live in Farmway Village, so it was a very defining moment for the city, where we've never done, yes, we've done annexations before of bare ground, and maybe others that did have one or two houses on it, but never anything of an entire community. And so we wanted to celebrate that and celebrate them. That community has gone through a lot over the generations and the decades that it's been out there, and so felt it was right to celebrate them and celebrate them being recognized as an official part of the city. So that's why it was not meant to be a campaign stomp or anything like that for any of the candidates that are out there, was simply an opportunity to just celebrate Farmway Village and just celebrate where they have been, and especially where they're at right now, was the purpose for that event that evening. And I believe that's all correct. Is that Counselor Dittenberg in regards to the numbers out there?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Another thing that's important to note, they are registered voters. They just vote in the city now rather than in the county, so there's no big scandal there about registering voters. They were just county voters, not city voters.
Okay, very good. And then, as I mentioned, Kyle, I believe it's Colin Lauren Huntington who is going to discuss the Sienna Hills road repair. So if you'd like to come up and address that quickly, you can. And we are going to, as I said, staff is going to present on that and take questions from council on that. So, but I do appreciate you being here to make sure that that does come to light. So, okay, and that is all signed up for audience participation, so that'll move us into, do we, we do have an amendment to the agenda this evening, Counselor Doty?
Mr. Mayor, I'll combine them both. That will satisfy, but amend the agenda to move, agenda to move item 17 from the consent calendar to new business or further discussion, and to pull item number 11 and delay that to a later date, once more information comes to light on item 11.
Okay. So is a motion, Counselor Doty, a second from Counselor Stodick, for amendment to the consent agenda as noted. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion passes. So with that, we have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
Aye.
That's a motion, Counselor Doty, a second from Counselor Stodick, for approval of the consent calendar as amended. So that voting is open at this time? So all votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. That'll move us into old business. So this is some discussion from staff. Appreciate staff being here for this in regards to, we'll start with the Golden Gate Irrigation District update from Mr. McDonald, and I believe Bruce, are you going to be the one batting for the Sienna Hills on that? So, okay, Mr. McDonald. And this is again in regards to just an update on the issues the Golden Gate Irrigation District's been facing for more than a few years now regarding providing water to their clients, which also happen to be a city of Caldwell residents.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this time, Mayor and council. Just a brief update, Golden Gate Irrigation District has 850 approximately users, and they are in the north part of town between, mainly between the interstate and the railroad, but they come down into this part of town a little bit as well. They have had irrigation problems for some time, and their system is very old. It's a gravity system that's very dilapidated, and they have had trouble because of the small size of their district and some of the other issues they've faced. They've had trouble funding some of those repairs. I have been working very closely with their legal team and attended some of their meetings, in addition, myself and also Counselor Register and Counselor Stodick, and we have been coordinating with them to try to find ways to help them move to the next step so that they can get water to all of their patrons. What we have learned just recently, and I was on the phone today with them, again, just to confirm some of these things, they received their assessments in December, and they anticipate that that's going to help them get a lot of the projects done before irrigation season in April. They submitted cost estimates. They received cost estimates to get all the work done, that total about $30,000, $34,000. When I was speaking with the, the legal representative of the district, I asked them what the priorities were, and he indicated to me that there's about, there's two projects that total about $8,000 that are really the priority, and once those are done, they think they can get water to everybody. The remainder of the projects are old pipe that need to be replaced or small leaks that do not prohibit them from delivering water. We initially discussed within the city about making a donation to them to help them get this jump started until they were able to receive their assessments. And then in talking to finance, we decided instead of doing that, what we can do is just pay our, our annual assessment. Is that my phone? Oh, okay, sorry. We would pay our annual assessment early and allow them to take those funds now that we would be paying in December, which we have already budgeted for, and they can get started on some of those projects now. It was indicated to me that they do have some debt, and so likely most of what we paid them now would go to pay off some debt, but then that would allow them in December to proceed immediately with their contractor that they already have lined up to get going on some of the critical projects that they have. I was told today that they anticipate they would be able to serve water to all of their patrons in April, once they get their assessments in December, and once they, once they give their contractor the green light. So what, what we are doing as a city, instead of making a donation, we're just going to pay our contribution early for Lyons Park and for Looby Park and a couple other properties we have, which amounts to about $7,200, which has been budgeted for, and then that'll give them something to get moving on now. And things sound promising after talking to them and after attending one of the meetings, and so I am happy to stand for any questions that council may have.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your work on this and moving that forward. I don't see any questions, so we appreciate you.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry, I was a little late. So one of the things I've, I've heard is that some of the problems are downstream from the water box on private property. Someone's property has had an issue which stops everybody else downstream from them. Is that being addressed as well, or what are we doing there?
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Allgood, Mr. Mayor. The, this district appears, in my mind, it appears to operate a little differently than like Pioneer. Pioneer delivers to the box, and then everything downstream in some of the old parts of town are private, and they're maintained by those property owners. It appears that this district tries to maintain all of the facilities, even though it's probably a little overwhelming. In the meeting that I attended with the district, their board meeting, there was discussion about one area in particular that was blocking water and not allowing it to get to Lyons Park, and that was a concern that came up, and that has been addressed. I know that following that discussion, I think the following week Lyons Park had plenty of water to be able to irrigate the park there with. And so that is a discussion that's come up, and the district is responsible. They have a ditch runner that's supposed to go through and, and review all of the gates and make sure that they're being used appropriately.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that update.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mills. And thank you for being here this evening. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We're here to talk about loose chips, I guess, again. And I came here in July, gave a report on the 2024 chip seal season that we had and the problems that we had with not enough oil, not a good gradation of chips, and as it resulted in a lot of segregation and chips just not sticking and staying, especially in the residential streets. At the time, I was looking at it, at what it would cost to go back and chip seal every street that we did in 2024, and gave you a price of approximately $440,000. But I have since gone back and looked, and we are in a new budget year now too, so we have opportunities before us we didn't have back in July. And if, really, the arterial and collector streets get so much traffic on them that actually they're not a problem, the, the chips have been pounded down into the oil with the traffic. So it's really the residential streets. It's, it is Sienna Hills, but it's, I just drove them all today, all the residential streets we did in 2024, and they're all in similar condition. They're not shedding as many chips as they did earlier this year, but there is still loose chips that are popping up. I saw them in people's driveways, that type of thing. So it is a reoccurring problem. So I took a look at what options we might have, and if we were to combine this with the, with the fog coating that we will be doing extra, we could get a cost savings of just doing residential streets, and I think it would be in the $250,000 range. And we do have money that I can see moving around that could potentially cover that. In this year's budget, we're planning to, to spend about $350,000 on new chips for 2027. But we have enough in stock that we can wait until October of this, of next year to purchase those chips. So I believe that's, that option's available to use about $250,000 of that fund to fog coat the streets that we did in 2024, to do that next summer, late spring, early summer, whenever the weather gets warm enough to, to be able to apply the, the fog coat. So that's my brief report. I'm certainly willing to stand for questions.
Perfect. Excellent. Quick question, then we'll get to council's questions. Would that require a budget amendment if it's going from one to the other, like Bruce was kind of talking about, or is that?
We would not be increasing the budget. It would just be using the current budget that we have, but delaying the purchase of chips until fiscal year '27 instead of occurring in 2026, which then potentially could make 2027's budget a little bit bigger.
Okay, very good. Counselor Register, then Counselor Doty.
Yeah, I have one question, and then I want to address the residents. But when could this be done for them?
The weather has to be 70 to 80 degrees, so we're really looking at next, most likely next June would be the earliest that we could get in there and apply it.
Okay. I do have some notes here that I wanted to go over for the residents in the area, just so we're all cleared up, because I do think this council's accountable to you. So both Counselor Stodick and I were approached, and we talked about this with some residents, and we, we had brought it up, and we were going to talk about it in council comments tonight, and so I'm really glad that we have an opportunity to actually have a presentation instead. But the thing that concerns me is that during the conversation I was having with residents, apparently there was an email that was sent out from the city saying that the council was presented with these options, and we chose to just continue sweeping. So I went back and watched the video from that presentation, which was on July 7th, and that's just what I want to clear up with you. So I went back and watched it, and we, we were told all, all the things about the excess rock chips, there wasn't enough oil put down, the chips were substandard, moving forward, there was a better process in place, it was a city project. We were also told that the city could go back and fog seal the whole area, which was larger than just Sienna Hills, for $440, and then just Sienna Hills for about $80,000 or $90,000. And then we were told that the city made a commitment to do more consistent sweeping, and that 80% of the rock had been picked up as of that time, which was in July of 2024. And then the question was proposed of, did we really want to spend a ton of money on going backwards? And some point, we have to say this is the new way we're going to do it and move forward, and you can't really look back. So at that point, one of the counselors, Counselor Allgood, actually made sure that the complaints were, were really kind of settled into your area to make sure that we could do the lesser amount, which was confirmed. And then Counselor Williams asked if the city's recommendation to counsel, was that what we were doing now with the sweeping was adequate, and if that was the recommendation, which he was told, it is the recommendation that, and they have made a commitment to sweep up the chips, and each time they sweep, the chips diminish. And so we were told at that point that it was the opinion of the city that it wasn't worthwhile to do anything else because the sweeping was going to take care of it. After that point, there was a brief discussion about some other things, and then all of a sudden, the topic was just changed to the fireworks stand question, which was a whole new discussion. So there was not a vote, there wasn't really much of a discussion, there wasn't really a choice. It was more of, this is what's happened, this is what we recommend, and then we moved on. So I just wanted you to know that this council did not sit, we, we had a discussion for sure. You can go back and watch the video on July 7th. But the discussion did not stop, and then the council was not asked what they wanted to do. It was simply, this is our recommendation, and we thought that was going to take care of it. So I'm really glad that we were able to find out from residents that it wasn't taken care of, and that you came back here so that we can now make sure that we do get it taken care of, if that's what this council decides to do.
Counselor Doty?
Mr. Mayor, I would support doing the fog seal as soon as reasonably possible in accordance with the qualifications that's required to do so.
Thank you. Counselor Stodick?
Just some comments. I, I've had similar conversations too with the folks at Sienna Hills, and, you know, some of the other problems they're having too relative to the chip seal. It's getting into a lot of lawns, and chip seal and lawnmowers don't work too well, especially the blades. And then there were some complaints too about people just walking, you know, with the, with the kiddos, how those rocks get up on the sidewalk, and they cause some problems too. So I think it's, you know, it's a major deal, and we really need to take care of it as soon as possible. And I, I would second Counselor Doty's motion.
Okay, so I don't think it was, yeah, a motion, but just second his support. Correct. Counselor Allgood?
Yeah, Bruce, I'm 100% for spending the money to, to resolve this problem with the real fog sealing. But Mrs. Chew testified that we're also getting bald spots, there's big patches. Is that a concern? Is that anything we can rectify, or is that, what, I, I want to make sure we're doing, we're correcting it 100% and not 50% kind of situation.
Yeah, there are bald spots, especially in some cul-de-sacs and eyebrow situations out there. It's very hard to go back and add in chips because they won't, they just won't, they won't attach. So really, all we can do with the fog coat we do is stop the additional loss of chips. But, but those areas that are starting to lose chips, like cul-de-sacs, all we can do is stop it. We can't really go back and add chips back in. They, they really won't, they won't stick.
So, so our best bet is to just get fog coat as quick as, as soon as the temperature will allow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So I just want to say thank you to Bruce. He truly cares about his job and what he does, and providing the best service to the residents that are out there. As, as he mentioned, he was out there driving every one of those streets today and really researching it, and I just couldn't, I can't say enough great things about Bruce and, and just how much he does care about his job and doing it right. So I just want to say thank you, Bruce, for taking that extra time and dedication to, to do that. And we realize that things change. Sometimes we think we have a solution, and it unfortunately just doesn't work that way, and so we come back and figure out, okay, what's the next step on that? So that's what we're at right now. So thank you again. Really do appreciate you and all your work. So, yes.
I, I believe we're kind of uniform in our thoughts. Can we get this on a consent calendar or, or an agenda item soon so we can formalize it?
So I don't know if it requires that. If it does, we can, we'll definitely do that and bring it back in November.
Because this is not an action item. This is just-
Correct. This is just information. There's no votes taken.
So I just want to turn it into an action item.
So, and I return, I guess, to our city attorney and finance director, if it needs to come back as an action item, or just only go move forward with allocating that fund to get the fog coat done next, early summer?
When we get the, the purchase for the fog seal, when we get that vendor, it'll come back as an action item, but that won't be till the spring of next year. So, is when that would come back. I could defer to Oscar, but I don't think it needs an action item. It just, we have your guys' recommendation, so we'll move forward with that recommendation. And then in the spring, there'll be an action item for the, the budgeted amount.
I just don't want it to slip between the cracks. I want to make sure it's dealt with.
And I see Oscar nodding his head. So yeah, so that's that commitment that we'll be doing, out there doing that, bringing that back in spring for the purchase of it, and be out there fog coating as early as possible. So as mentioned, it'd be early, earliest in the summer that we can. Did you have a comment or question, Counselor Dittenberg?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, based upon Ray Lynn's comment, maybe we can ask both Ray Lynn and our city clerk to maybe put an asterisk by that action item, so that it reminds us in April when we pay for that fog coat, that- in April, when we pay for that fog coat, that we've actually taken action on it, so we'll know.
Okay, very good, we can definitely do that, so. Okay, so that is all for that, and again, thank you, thank you again to Bruce and his staff, and for all of you for coming out and making sure that we are aware of that, and give us opportunities to correct the situation. So again, thank you to everybody on finding an amenable solution. We wish it could be sooner than later, but unfortunately with the weather, we'll have to go off of that. So thank you again to everybody on that. And so with that, we'll move into new business. So on this, we've got the item number 17 moved down, so this is considered resolution accepting a utility easement. And Haley, you were going to touch on this.
Mayor, council members, I wanted to show you the exhibit, as seen on the screen, that we have requested from the property owner. It is a 10-foot sewer easement. They, the property owner came in with a building permit. We noticed that there was a sewer line that is right, right on the edge of their property line and the alleyway, you can see it faintly in green there on that north side. When we see these circumstances, we request that as part of the building permit, that the applicant record an easement, so that we may continue to operate and maintain our infrastructure. This property is in the traditional neighborhood zone, so they do have a five-foot alley setback requirement anyways, so there's already that five feet where they cannot construct permanent structures. Our easement is 10 feet, so we are asking for an additional five feet from that, from that setback. But with that, I will stand for any questions.
Maybe a quick one. So there's a prescriptive easement there already, correct? Do you mind touching on that, what that is?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this, I tried to do some research on how long the sewer line has been constructed. I found the original plat from 1906 and the duplicate plat from 1959, but I was unable to find the construction documents for the easement itself. I'm confident that this easement is at least 20 years old, so there is a prescriptive easement already on this line. It's been existing for, existed for a very long time.
Very good. And so what could you, maybe just what a prescriptive easement is, just really quickly, briefly, so everyone understands what that means?
Yes, a prescriptive easement exists when there's existing infrastructure. That existing infrastructure has existed for a long enough period of time where it is assumed to be an easement over it for that continual maintenance. You often see this for prescriptive right-of-way. I think that's a little bit of an easier circumstance to think of prescriptive easements regarding, where we've already been maintaining and operating this line for an extended period of time, so it's just known and understood that we have this easement to continue this maintenance. I'm sure Oscar could provide a more technical definition of the prescriptive easement. Again, it's easy to understand for prescriptive right-of-way, right? We continue to maintain those roads, whether we have the actual formal right-of-way or not. So it's really just an administrative cleanup to obtain the easement over our sewer line.
Perfect, now that was excellently done, I don't think we need to go to the city attorney on that, thank you so much. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the extra work. I know staff is busy, and we have these meetings, and sometimes we ask for things that add to your already busy schedule. Appreciate this picture so much. Just to be clear, the packet didn't have all that information in it that we just got. And so when we read this, and it says in the item number 17, for the purpose of construction, operation, and maintenance, and one of my concerns was, have we not constructed it? Are we still going to construct it? Where's it going to be on this property? Where's it at in relation to the alley? Is there already a setback there? And so this is very helpful, and as decision makers, and we go through this packet, and we see things, it just seems the responsible thing to do is to get information before we make these decisions. And so, again, thank you for clearing that up and bringing all that good information. It's clearly the right thing to do, and I appreciate your work on it.
Very good. Do you want to make a motion, or?
I'd be happy to make a motion. To adjourn, or is this for the item?
You can make a motion to adjourn, we'll see if that goes anywhere, but.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution accepting a permanent utility easement between the city of Caldwell, Caldwell and Jeremy R. Gordon and Marlia C. Gordon for the purpose of construction, operation, and maintenance of the sanitary sewer mainline.
Just a motion from Counselor Williams, and a second from Counselor Denver for approval of this resolution, any discussion on that motion? Okay, so with that, it is open for voting. All votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. And that'll move us into action item number two, is the resolution 376-25, adopting a MOU between the city of Caldwell and Caldwell Urban Renewal Agency for shared staffing. Ray Lynn?
This is kind of a MOU just to document all of the time that the city staff put in for the urban renewal agency, and then obviously, there's not a dollar monetary amount in here, because every time through the budget process, we work through that, how urban renewal is going to compensate the city. So this just puts it into a formal written agreement, so.
Very good, thank you so much, Counselor Stodick.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ray Lynn, the concern I had about this particular one is, if urban renewal runs out of money, then who's going to pay our staff if they do the work for them? How's that work?
So for the city staff, the city's budget includes the entirety of the city's salary, so the city still would be city employee, and so the city would be on the hook for that. What it would be, is that if urban renewal did not, they only compensate a portion of that, and so if they did not have the additional revenue, then that's where we would see it as a reduction in revenue on the city side to cover that, instead of, and a reduction in expense, unless, you know, it came to the point that the entirety, we would have to look at the budget and be like, discussions of layoffs or something like that, but I don't think it's that extreme.
Okay, so it wouldn't be any deficits as far as we're concerned, then?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Allgood?
Yeah, I just, I worked with Ray Lynn and Mark Hilty on this, and this is not anything new, we've done this for years. This is simply formalizing what we're doing and adding a layer of transparency. And I thank Ray Lynn and Mark, they really nailed it. But we, again, we just wanted to make sure it was clear what was happening, because we are two separate entities, but we work together, so I just wanted to make it clear. Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much. Counselor Doty?
Make a motion?
Yes.
To approve resolution 376-25, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the city of Caldwell and Caldwell Urban Renewal Agency for shared staffing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So motion from Counselor Doty, and a second from Counselor Allgood for adoption, approval of resolution 376-25. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, voting is open at this time. All votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. And that'll move us into action item number three. This is considered bill 51, ordinance 3713, amending section 110407 of Caldwell City Code pertaining to financial guarantees. Haley?
Mayor, council members, I'm presenting this ordinance tonight with the request to lower our bonding requirements. Historically, the engineering department has required a one, or let me take one step back, I apologize. When we have a developer bond for a development, it is because that they want to be able to move a plat forward before completing the entirety of their construction documents. We still require that all developers complete our, we call them our big five, it's all of the life safety infrastructure associated with the developments. That's going to include our water, our sewer, our roadways, our joint trench, those items we require to be constructed before we will consider bonding for the remainder improvements. Historically, our bonding requirements have been, it was about 100, I think it was 150%, and then on top of that, we required an extra, an extra 10% for admin, an extra 10% for inflation, an extra 10% for, there were two other items that we then kept requiring an additional 10% and 10% on top of what we were requiring. And so it's been making bonding a little bit more confusing and convoluted than necessary, and it's been making it far more expensive than other typical jurisdictions, not just in the valley, but just jurisdictions as a whole. So we just wanted to do a flat 150% bond requirement that would hold true for one year, and if the developer was unable to complete those improvements within one year, we would either extend the bond, and if we need to increase it because of inflation, we could do it at that time, or we could cash the bond and complete the improvements ourself. So that is the request tonight, to lower the bonding to a flat 150%.
Perfect, thank you so much. Counselor Doty?
I just have some comments. Didn't we have a bond that we had for a sewer line, and then it's taken us years to deal with the bonding company? So this wouldn't resolve that type of debate in court. So what I'm saying is, by reducing this, still would not stop us from going to court. But my concern still is, is that we bond for these things, but yet, they don't seem to want to pay once we bond.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Doty. So when we bond, we do require, require cash bonds. So the circumstance that you have mentioned was a city-led project rather than a private development-led project. So it is a little, a little bit of a different circumstance, where we were working with the authority company of a contractor for a project that they bid on for us, rather than working with the financial group from a developer, where they have already placed that full cash bond in a secured bank account. And so, so lowering the bond amount, I would say, wouldn't alleviate that concern, you know? Anytime there's money involved, people don't want to give up their money, so there's always going to be that conversation. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the argument that lowering the bonding requirement would ease that burden.
Perfect, okay, thank you so much. And this was from some feedback we got from some of the outreach that we've been doing with different groups, and this is one of their concerns, we're excited to be making these changes in regards to that. So thank you so much for your work on that, Haley. So with that, is there a motion regarding this bill and ordinance? Counselor Williams?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to sponsor bill number 51, ordinance 3713, and move for passage by title, only approve the summary for publication.
Second. So motion from Counsel Williams, and a second from Counselor Denver for passage of bill 51, ordinance 7, 3713. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open at this time. All votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. And that'll move us into action item number four, under new business, and this is bill 52, ordinance 3714, annexing St. Alphonsus Medical Center into the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District. So this is one of those housekeeping items of them coming into the Caldwell Irrigation District. And so I do not believe we need any description on that, as I think we're all familiar with it. But if there are any questions, staff is available, or if there's anybody ready to make a motion.
So.
And a second?
Second.
Very good, and so that would be for motion for passage of bill 52, ordinance 3714, annexing St. Alphonsus Medical Center into the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District.
We could check with the clerk, but I think she wants us to read it.
Do we need to? Because it's not on the, for the irrigation ones, do we need to do that as well?
The last portion of that.
No.
Okay, very good.
All right. Yep.
Okay, with that, I think we're ready for voting, so voting is open. And voting is closed, that passes unanimously, and thank you for double checking on that, both Chris and Christina, to make sure we did it right. You got the little buzz in your chair that she's got to keep you, make sure we're doing it right? Okay, so that'll move us to number five, action item, and this is a quasi-judicial public hearing, MOD 25-1. And I will allow Joe to give the explanation where we're at. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Good evening. Hopefully, this is a quick and easy one for you, but we'll see how it goes. Application is MOD 25-01. It's a modification of a previous condition of approval, not a development agreement modification, as that might be determined, but a condition of approval modification, or an order of decision modification. Specific to this site, it is located at the east corner of the intersection of 21st and Commercial, or Franklin and Commercial, however you would like to see those roads that have 14 different names. It is a 0.3-acre site, currently zoned C3. So on the right-hand side is the zoning map. As noted, the property is already zoned C3, it was rezoned in 2022 from M1 to C3, that's why it's kind of on a little island of C3 there. The future land use map depicts it as mixed-use center, as well as every property around it. The existing C3 zoning is compatible with the mixed-use center land use. Mixed-use center, in general, are hubs of intense commercial activity, they're supposed to attract people from not just the city, but also regional areas. They're located along major corridors and transit lines. These areas, again, mixed-use center we're discussing, accommodate a wide array of commercial uses that serve residents and visitors, provide for commercial facilities that include shopping, entertainment, and employment options. The specific request tonight is for a modification of a previous condition of approval in relation to ZON 22-03. Previous approval anticipated a new restaurant, but through the discussion at the hearing in 2022, it was limited to just drive-through service. The pictures before you is just, the right one is a zoomed-in picture of the left, but I wanted you guys to get a fuller picture of the access points on the left, and then a zoomed-in picture of the actual site being discussed on the right-hand side. The applicant, ALC Architecture, on behalf of the potential new user, would be Mobeta's, is requesting to modify this condition to simply allow a modern faceted restaurant that has both indoor seating and drive-through service. That's it, that's the only condition change that they're really asking for. As far as access, the access that's permitted is off a commercial way. They're also proposing, if you saw in the previous outline, an access along the north, to go north of the canal, and back out to Bluebird Place, which is an existing lane over there to the east of the site. This would provide better connectivity than the original approval by far. Engineering has reviewed that, they've said that that's okay, they just have to enter into a license agreement with the city, as well as the irrigation district, and that they also know that the utilities are or will be available to the site, so they don't have any concerns there. We notified this per our, you know, statutes, Black Canyon Irrigation District was the only agency comment that we received, and they just noted that the Notice Canal is within their jurisdiction, that's the canal to their east. They noted that there's requirements to maintain compliance with all of their easements, and a desire to formally review future plans as they get submitted. So as they come in, we'll just make sure that the building permits get submitted through them, or prior to that, they'll have to get prior approval from the irrigation district to build over the canal there, which, over the existing culvert. So with that, staff recommends that if council approves this requested condition modification, that it's subject to the conditions within the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and order of decision, and I will stand for any questions that council has.
Good, thank you so much, appreciate that. Counselor Stodick?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Joe, which utility would not be available in that area, do you know?
I know they are available.
They're all, well, it's said over there that maybe or something, I was just curious.
Sorry, I said are or will be, that's just our standard language.
Okay, so they're all there, right?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I do not see any other, oh, Counselor Allgood?
Yeah, is this a traditional restaurant or a coffee shop?
Mobeta's is like a, it's just a regular fast food, like McDonald's.
I'm just counting 11 parking spaces total. And does that meet our requirement for that type of structure?
Yes, it does. Based upon their square footage, they're overparked per the fast food code, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, I don't see, oh, Counselor Doty?
I would just say, at every soccer tournament that I've been to, and I think you go as well, Mayor, that these places are loaded, so it should be a great asset if the council approves them, approves it tonight. So I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready, or unless we're going to hear from.
So we do have one person signed up to speak in favor, but he's like, if you're going to just make a motion, make a motion, it sounds like, okay, so he's deferring.
Just to clarify, I didn't know with the MOD request, if we were going to take any or not.
So you're good, it sounds like, so. Okay, so I think he deferred, is that correct, Mr. Jones?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Based on the findings, the facts, and conclusions of law, the Caldwell City Council hereby orders that case number MOD 25-01, a request to modify the conditions of approval, and case number ZON 22-3 is approved, with the conditions as outlined within the staff report.
Second.
So motion from Counselor Doty, a second from Counselor Stodick for approval of case MOD 25-1. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, so with that, voting is open at this time. Okay, so with that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. Mr. Jones, thank you still for making the trip out here. We appreciate it, so. Now, go get, no, go get under construction. Okay, so that moves us on to item number six. Uh, so this is a quasi judicial item as well. And this is Case DEV Twenty-Five-Dash-Three, requesting development agreement modification for the North Ranch DA to permit a large, multi-family dwelling development. Katie, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Katie Wright, Planner, Two-O-Five South Sixth Avenue. Uh, before you tonight is Haystack Way Apartments and Saddle Avenue Hotel, DEV Twenty-Five-O-Three. The project location is three-point-nine-two site, or acre site located between Haystack Way and Saddle Avenue, approximately five-hundred-and-sixty feet north of Highway Twenty-Twenty-Six. Uh, the site has furnished along Haystack Way and Saddle Avenue. The project site's currently surrounded by commercial and light industrial uses along with vacant land and some residential. There are seven developments within a one-mile radius of the subject site that are either actively under construction or have been approved for entitlements. The application before you tonight is for a development agreement modification to the North Ranch Development Agreement applica-, uh, applicable to the site shown in red. In October twenty-twenty, an annexation and in twenty-oh-three, a comp plan amendment, CMP Twenty-Oh-Five, and a preliminary plat sub twenty-oh-six were approved for the annexation of a hundred-and-fifteen acres, twenty-five of those acres to be zoned C-three and ninety acres to be zoned M-one with a comp plan amendment to reflect that change as well from commercial and service to manufacturing and production. Um, in June twenty-twenty-one, a development agreement amendment was recorded to affect only Lot One and Block One, which are not lots that are gonna be discussed today. And then currently in this development, um, you're probably very familiar with North Ranch Development. Um, there are some light industrial and commercial uses operating within North Ranch as well as a school. The development agreement for North Ranch allows several commercial uses to be permitted within this development. The use of motel is listed currently within the development agreement to be permitted, but the request to add a hotel is mostly for clarification purposes. Uh, the use of multi-family is not currently listed within the development agreement. The application is to modify the North Ranch Development Agreement to allow for ninety-eight-unit apartment building, which is what you'll see on your left of the screen, and then a hundred-and-nineteen-unit hotel building, which is on the right, um, on the subject site only with some requested modifications to the multi-family code. The apartments are proposing to have more urban amenity package to make up for the lack of usable open space they're proposing and the reduced number of private patios due to the nature of the area. They are proposing six amenities as opposed to the three that are required by code. Uh, the hotel is proposing to have a hundred-and-nineteen parking spaces, one per each hotel room. Some of these spaces will be part of a shared parking agreement with the VA Clinic and DMB Lumber to the south. With these items being exceptions, the proposed development project has been analyzed for compliance with city codes and policies, and staff finds the proposed development is in compliance with landscaping requirements, bulk standards for lot size setbacks, furnished, and height of buildings, all-size land use, design, and amenity requirements, and all other zoning subdivision ordinances. And tonight's request, um, consists of the applicant's proposal within the M-one zone and also in the APO Two overlay. Uh, within the DA, it states the additional permitted slash prohibited uses are listed as many M-one uses within the code don't meet the goal for what North Ranch was intending, um, as it is less industrial in nature for most M-one areas. Uh, the proposed development is surrounded by M-one and C-three zones, and staff finds the proposed uses are in alignment with the development agreement permits for the area and would create opportunities for employees within the North Ranch Development. The site is within the mixed-use center place type. The proposed development is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, and the proposed density of the apartments are in compliance with the comprehensive plan as well. This development meets many goals and policies within the comp plan, including implementing shared parking agreements and cross-access easements, as well as providing mixed-use development in the area, specifically a hotel is called out in the comp plan for the mixed-use center. And the proposed development will have adequate site access and all utilities are available or will be available as outlined in the engineering staff report. Public agencies were notified and asked to provide comments. The only agencies that had comments were Compass, just provided analysis, um, based on what they typically analyze, and they did determine that this development would improve net fiscal impact and economic activity center access. Valley View School District urges council to consider the growth of the area and its impact on schools. Um, ITD commented and just said that they were working with the applicant on reviewing their TIS. Uh, the city's Economic Development Department did submit a letter in favor of the project due to the nature of North Ranch and the opportunity this will provide for the area, and we received no comments from the public. To summarize, this request is to modify the development agreement for North Ranch that would allow ninety-eight-unit apartment building, um, and the hotel with a hundred-and-nineteen units on these parcels only, as shown on in the submitted site plan. Uh, these uses would not be permitted for the entirety of North Ranch. Um, and staff recommends that if council approves the development agreement modification request, that such request is subject to the conditions as specified in the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and order of decision. And thank you, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Questions? Counselor Stotak?
Well, I'm sorry.
Counselor Doty?
Yes, on the proposed multi-family, did it meet the parking requirements? They didn't ask for a waiver and amendment on the parking requirements?
Mayor and Counselor, they do meet the parking for the multi-family.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Allgood?
Uh, yeah, Katie, under staff review and analysis, it says staff notes the applicant is not proposing to meet all the requirements of multi-family standards. Uh, code for the apartment building due to location is hard to meet several of these standards. What are the standards that are not being met?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counselors. So they meet, um, the architectural standards and those types of things for the look of the building. Um, the, the main things that they're requesting are their open space, as you can kind of see on this, uh, photo, that plaza-looking area. That's where they're gonna be providing most of their amenities as well as some indoor uh, within kind of like a lobby area, and I'm sure that the applicant can touch on this a little better. Um, but they're meeting about seven-point-eight percent, um, open space for this area where it's required to have ten percent. So they're not providing the, um, code standard for that ten percent, but they're attempting to make up for it with the, the six amenities rather than the three that would be required to try and beef that up to make up for, for the lost open space.
And there was also some discussion about a lack of private space. What was that?
Yes, yes. So our code now requires that each unit has a sixty-square-foot minimum private patio or deck of some sort. Um, and on their proposal, I believe that it's eighty-five of the ninety-eight units will have their own patio, and those will be a little bit smaller on average than the sixty-square feet.
Thank you.
Counsel Stotak?
Ms. Mayor, sorry about that.
No, you're good.
Uh, just a comment. Uh, there was a question whether this project was approved, uh, several years ago, and I was on the council, and I, and Counselman Allgood, I know you were on there with me about as many years. Do you remember this at all? I, I sure don't.
No, I don't remember this.
Okay. Was there any question about that, or?
Mayor and Counselor, there's nothing that I have found in the history that this project has come before council.
Okay.
Um, North Ranch, again, in twenty-twenty, um, that's the full development, but this is just for these two parcels that are gonna be between, um, the, uh, sorry, Haystack and Saddle. Um, so it would just be applicable to these two sites as you see on that site plan. Um, it wouldn't open it up to be permitted uses throughout all of North Ranch as a whole. Uh, but the only other applications you would have seen for this, these two specific lots that I'm aware of would have been the North Ranch Development originally and then the addendum to the DA, but that was for the parcels to the north, not this one.
Okay, so we're clear on that. The other thing I just wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, there was a concern that I had a conversation with some new information relative to this project, uh, in our, uh, council, uh, room there, and, uh, make sure there's no, uh, improprieties or anything. I'm gonna refrain from voting on this particular project, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we actually do not have anybody signed up, uh, to speak on this, um, but is the applicant or representative by chance here? Okay. Very good. Please come forward. And if you could just state your name, and if you don't mind, usually you don't have to say your address, but I'll write it in here so we have that. If you don't mind your name and address, we'll get it written down.
My name is Dale King. I represent the applicant. Uh, I work for Faber Construction. We were the driving force behind putting the development together. I live in Anacortes, Washington, but as you guys know, I travel about every other week here to work in the Boise market and the areas to help put together projects and design development, uh, for not only multi-family but also hospitality projects. We originally started with this particular development roughly about a year and a half, two years ago, uh, taking a look at it, about doing a, just a multi-family project on the particular site because it is in a commercial zone setting that they're wanting to try to accomplish for the highway corridor and to get everything squared away and done. And so instead of just using a mixed-use, we thought it would be hugely beneficial, especially with Roger Brooks's information of our shortfall of doors for hotels in, uh, the city of Caldwell and increase the taxable base, especially with the lodging tax and things like that. We thought it'd be a better use of facility in order to have that particular development. And so that's why we're trying to incorporate both together. And yes, um, as you can see in the particular development for the mixed-use of where it's laid out, the apartment site versus the hotel site and where it sits, what we're trying to accomplish here is have, uh, workforce living in those particular areas, especially with, um, DMB warehousing, their shipping containers and all, or shipping areas that they utilize. Also the development for, um, having an opportunity to house traveling nurses and traveling doctors too as well with the community, especially with the expansion of the hospital, hopefully within the next five to ten years in that section too as well. Um, so we wanted to point out the differences. What we're trying to accomplish is since this is a very urban setting in a commercial type of area, is to have not larger-scale building, but also having a small scale for their decks, patios, so we could create more buffer with landscaping in those particular areas and therefore the reduction so we can have an offset between them. The other thing that we're trying to accomplish too within the building, since it is an urban type of setting, is interior corridors. This is not a woody walk-up building that you would be seeing. It would be more of a professional services with FOB key buildings for securities, workout rooms and amenities on the ground floor for the tenants of the building too as well. Therefore, we're creating more amenities within the building, not the exterior part of the building due to the urban setting, but we're still having the courtyard for privacy and use on the exterior too as well. Uh, this kind of shows just the setting for unit spaces, showing those interior corridor unit count mix that we're going to have. There are two as well between studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms to try to increase a wide range of housing within that market in that area. We're really dedicated for design of buildings. The reason why we're having those setbacks too as well for the deck, you'll see that they line up with the doors and the windows in those sections and also the patios and not give a vast difference in sizing and spacing for the building. We are using multiple, um, materials on the exterior part of the building that would give that type of feel within the community. The hotel would be on the site closest to B and D site too as well. We have had discussions with the, uh, the owner of B and D. He's excited about this particular processes because he sees the growth opportunity to have executives and things come in to their offices there, that they've spent a great deal of resources in trying to develop and would see this as a benefit within the community. There's the architectural look of the hotel with design. As you can see, it would be a mixed, a dual branded hotel, a Hampton Inn and Home Two Suites, so we would be able to accommodate both a little bit longer stays too as well with short stays under the Hilton brand logo hotel. So the request for deviations that we were talking about was the open space due to the urban setting. We're trying to, uh, overcome those with adding more amenities, like she said, in versus three for the multi-family, we would increase those to six. The parking stalls on our particular agreement was on the hotel side. The reason why we're trying to accomplish and do that is, is we don't want to overpark in the region since hotels use those additional twenty-three parking spaces at night. That's when the parking agreement comes into play with DMB on their overflow parking that they put in. That's not a considered of the parking for the retail componentry. It's just additional parking that they put in for their employees, and they roughly have about, I think it's about thirty-five to forty additional parking that never gets utilized, but because of the operation of the hotel in the evenings, of course, DMB's not open during that timeframe, so it's vacant during that process as too as well. So we're trying to be able to utilize the resource so we don't have too much payment out in that particular area too as well. Of course, the apartment decks and patios that we talked about, and the one modification too as well for hotels, uh, we do not require to have a loading berth in particular because this is a limited services hotel, so we don't need to have a loading dock or anything of that magnitude that's in the code. So that's also another deviation that we're requesting. And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Very good. Thank you so much. Uh, I do not, uh, Counsel Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just one question that comes to mind because, um, you are proposing more amenities inside because it's more of an urban dwelling than open space. Can you, can you tell us what those amenities are? What are we getting for giving up the open space?
So we have, uh, gym workout facilities within the interior for the residents. We're also having larger lobbies and congregation space so they can come in and sit down and communicate on the inside too as well as plus meeting rooms on the ground floor that we're taking on versus having rooms within that particular space, interior settings. So if, in the wintertime when it's colder and things like that, they can utilize the interior lobbies to congregate, sit, and visit versus being outside in the patio areas is what we're trying to accomplish.
So is it, is it fair to say then, we're not giving up the community space, we're giving up the kind of community space that we're used to for the sake of an urban development? Is that?
Well, it's. The difference is, is when you're looking at a mixed-use development or a multi-family development, you're looking at it across a broad spectrum of city amenities, right? Could be out in the different residential areas or wherever it's in acceptable use. So you're looking at a larger broad spectrum of your code writing. What, what this does is this is taking into account, it's a higher urban area due to your commercial settings and set-outs and things like that, and you're trying to give it more of the same feel, so you're not branching out to change the look or the wide spaces that you're trying to create on your density requirements. This is a density that's permitted for this particular section. The only thing that we're asking for is to change in open space for the exterior standpoint. We do have open space. The only difference is we're a little less percentage-wise than meeting the actual code that's written across the broad spectrum.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, one more.
Yeah.
Um, it, it makes me think a little bit about this, uh, apartment. I forget where I am.
Tillion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, over here, what, what square footage size are the average? You have multiple, you got studios all the way up to three bedrooms.
Yeah.
Do you know off the top of your head what the square footage of these apartments are gonna be?
I don't from the Tillion standpoint. I do know the hard part about Tillion is, is they don't have any exterior private patio spaces, right?
Right.
Decks, exterior, being able to go outside your apartment on a nice day and sit out and enjoy a glass of wine as you're looking out and enjoying the weather. That's what we're trying to accomplish with those decks and those settings, is to give them exterior exposure too as well under those decks. You'll see a lot of those decks are actually covered too as well, so if it is raining, they could still be able to have the opportunity to sit outside in the warmer weather.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Doty?
And I just want to confirm, you've talked to Roger Brooks, this fits within his plan because we haven't seen the plan yet. And so I just want to make sure that, uh, that conversation is taken.
Yeah, we have, uh, visited multiple times with Roger Brooks and trying to accommodate the standards that we're in a shortfall in today's market. That's the big thing I want to stress. Roger Brooks in his particular report says, as of today, we are in a shortfall of over three-hundred rooms that are needed in the city of Caldwell, today's standards. of over 300 rooms that are needed in the city of Caldwell, today's standards. If we continue on the trajectory for continued growth, we're going to be in a larger deficit in future years to come too as well. But yeah, we have, this is not just the one. There are additional areas with his plan that we've visited with him about, and he does know this site too as well.
Thank you. Counsel Allgood?
Yeah, Dale. I'm all in on the hotel. I 100% agree. We're just shorter rooms. We need more room.
Sure.
I'm struggling with the multifamily apartment building. It's super high density on a real small spot.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm struggling with that. I can't tell you where I'm going yet. I want to hear other comments, but kind of feels like a square peg in a round hole in that location.
Understand.
And so, and so like I said, I'm all in on the hotel. I'm struggling with the multifamily. I just want to be upfront with you and tell you what I'm thinking.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. The one thing I could say, especially with that particular area, because of the growth of the business growth, we also need to give opportunities for people to live and work and not have to utilize vehicles or cars to get to those particular deals. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish right in that area. And you can see from the broad scale of room types that we're trying to create versus pinpointing the best economical value. We're trying to run the spectrum of all types of units because it'll be larger appealing to the market.
Can I just follow up? So, so are these, are these apartments, I don't know on a scale, are they, are you picturing more of a high-end apartment or a workforce apartment? What are you kind of...
I would say there would be a mixture, a blended of just about everything, to be honest with you. It's going to be a market-driven housing, to be honest with you. That's kind of where the, we lie in those unit counts, but your larger rooms are cheaper on a price per square foot to rent because they're larger scales, the three bedrooms, things like that. You can take on, let's say for instance, you have three nurses that are traveling nurses that want to have rooms and all that good stuff. They can combine to stay within those units and offset cost expenditures because they may not live here full-time, but they're a vital resource for the hospital or the amenities on that corner space that are needed too as well. That's what we're trying to accomplish is being a larger benefit to that particular community up at 2026.
Thank you.
Counsel Register.
Thank you. So I'm actually on this sort of thinking the same way as Counsel Allgood. I, believe it or not, like the hotel in this location, and I kind of wish we knew you had this property when we were talking about the hotel at Fairgrounds because it could have avoided a lot of, a lot of that since it's also a KSA project. So I do think that I completely understand that we're behind in hotel room doors, that we need those, that that's part of something also that Roger Brooks has recommended, but I'm also struggling with the apartments attached to it. And I wish this was two separate proposals. If it was just a hotel, you would be having my support, but now that we have the apartments hooked into it, it's making it more difficult for me. And one of the reasons why is because one of the things that we have to meet is that the proposed use will be adequately served by essential public services, which also includes the schools. And the letter from Valley View, which is typically usually just kind of a general letter, this one was different as far as I could tell, and it kind of struck me different, but what they said was that they plan on having their elementary schools at capacity in 2029, but they were especially concerned with Ridgeview High School, which is currently at 1,704 students and that they will max out at 1,800 students. And their concern is that the thousands of homes already approved will max out that school. And they urge us to consider the rate of growth. So for me, along with, I think your changes are, are nice, but we have this comp plan that, that is really great and we're already making changes through it and it's new. So there's just, that kind of has an issue for me, but really what is, do you have any conversations with the schools other than this letter? Because I'm concerned that we are once again going to put schools and other essential city services at risk by continuing to add residents without knowing exactly where we're at or having that information. And again, if these were separate projects, it would be a lot easier.
Sure, sure. The big thing that I could tell you is because it is a mixed use development, you're getting opportunities to have a blend of all kinds of stuff within that particular zone. The one thing I wanted to stress to you guys too as well, this is a permitted calculated use. There's no density bonuses. It meets density requirements. It's the use. It's the same. It wouldn't matter whether if it was a multifamily or a hotel or anything like that. It's a permitted density on this site. The thing that we're asking for is the deviations to that particular amenities because of the urban setting and what we're doing. The also, the large thing that the city of Caldwell is getting huge benefit on is the taxable revenue these two buildings create because of the amount of development that's going in there. We've just increased the taxable base when they come online for the city of Caldwell of about $40 million. Those schools get huge benefit from that because of the increase of taxable base.
Thank you.
Okay, I do not see any other questions. So thank you so much, Dale. It's good to see you. Thank you for being here. Okay, and as mentioned, that that is the only person that has signed up to speak on this matter. So with that, I'll close public testimony and we'll turn this over to counsel for a motion for discussions on that. Counsel Denberg.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments here before I proceed, but this is the, the very project that this body struggled with many years ago. And the reason why I say that is because as the other hat that I wear in the community as the Director of the Housing Authority, the city struggled with this issue of how do we get housing near where people work? And how do we provide this workforce housing? Tillian did that for this community. We have a workforce employee sitting right here. We have a huge workforce out in that Sky Ranch area and there is a, a need for, for housing in that area. And when we talk about the highest and best use of this property, I think the highest and best use of this property is a hotel, which not only would serve D and B executive, but there's also a, a hospital that's there. And the hospital, if I understand correctly, is also planning on expanding to some sort of a cancer center over there. So what a better thing to have than to have both workforce housing and, and a hotel in that area. The other thing that is important that the applicant mentioned is this is, is, is market driven, driven housing. And I would be, I think we should all be remiss if we think that we know what's best for a developer who's willing to come in and spend millions and millions of dollars and create substantial tax revenues. And again, back to the, the use of this as a hotel and a, and a high-rise apartment or a high-density apartment, it fits this area. We're, we're not talking about something in a, in an R2 or a different area. We're talking about something that, that really fits in this area. And so having said that, I'll make a motion that based upon the finding of fact and the conclusion of law, that City of Council hereby orders case number DEV 25-03, requesting a development agreement modification to the North Ranch is approved with conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Very good. So we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion from Counsel Denberg and a second from Counsel Doughty for approval of case number DEV 25-3. So discussion on that motion. Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for staff. Katie, did you say that this is in compliance with our award-winning comp plan? See, I threw that award-winning in there.
Mayor and Counselor, it is in compliance with the comp plan. The mixed-use center does specifically call out for hotels and then higher-density residential.
Thank you, and congratulations again.
Counselor, nope. Okay, very good. So I don't see any other discussion. So again, the motion is for approval. And so with that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed and that motion does pass. Four in favor. As mentioned, Counsel Stoddick did abstain from the vote and Counsel Register did vote in the negative. So with that, it is, it does pass with four in favor, one in opposition, and one abstention on that. So with that, we now move to item number seven on our new business, which is the finance report.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Allgood.
I move that accounts payable in the amount of $3,398,071.69 represented by number, check numbers 1-88917 through 1-89195 in electronic payments and payroll for the amount of $896,939.81 represented by check numbers 40205 through 40227 and direct deposits be accepted, payments approved, and vouchers filed in the office of the city clerk.
Do we have a second?
Is he right, Chuck?
He's right. Check it.
Okay, so he was double-checking your math there, Counsel Allgood. So, it's a mushroom, Counsel Allgood, second, Counsel Stoddick for approval of the finance report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now motion passes. And that is the, oh wait, sorry, Counsel comments. I was getting ahead of myself a little bit. I was trying to help Jeff get us to be towards the end closer as he still wants to get out here. And so this evening, we'll begin with Counsel Register. Okay, Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question. We, we commented earlier, someone commented about how we're delaying the bridge work on Kimball. Are we going to open up that, that pagoda? I forget what we call it. It's still taped off, but that's where everybody watches the dragon. Or is it not able to be accessed publicly? Because that's a, that's a happy spot. And then I'll have one more thing after I get that answer.
Councilman Williams, yes, we are working with a contractor to be able to get that area opened back up. We met with the building department to determine, they had started the demolition of that structure already, and so we met with the building department to determine if the entire roof needs to come off to ensure that it's safe for the public or if we can just open it up now. The contractor is going to do a little bit of more work, but it will be opened in time for winter wonderland.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then just another comment. I know especially this season, things can look complicated around town. There I said messy, but if you get a mile-high view of Caldwell, things are really looking good. And the people on the outside looking in are, are really raving about Caldwell and praising Caldwell. And because we live here and work here and are vested in here, it's, it's personal a lot of times, just because we love it. But, but take it, take it from those looking in. If you don't see it yourself, things are really great in the city of Caldwell, and I'm happy to live here and my family's here. And yeah, congratulations to all of us.
Thank you, Counsel Allgood.
Just slightly on what Counsel Williams just said. I was at noon break lunch and it was kind of the joke of how many ribbon cuttings we've been to in, in this past month or two. I mean, it's like a ribbon cutting every other day around the city somewhere. I, I think a lot of people are making a lot of real serious investment in our city because they feel like there's opportunity here.
Thank you so much, Counsel Denberg.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, I just want to mention for Sue's benefit, sitting in the front row there, you know, I think the golf board is doing some great things and I really appreciate what, what the golf course is doing. And I just wanted to report that there's a lot of enthusiasm with the people on, on the golf board and, and around, around the golf course. But I also wanted to mention the plaza. I had an opportunity to probably visit the plaza every week this summer, and even in the little presentation with the, the food guy from the college, I got to see my picture in there. And the plaza is just a gem to our community. There is, there is no doubt about that. And this is the time of year when the plaza doesn't look nice. It looks ugly because they've got a bunch of pallets out there doing other stuff. But the remarkable thing is we still have great restaurants. We still have a great downtown. And I encourage anybody who hasn't yet to enjoy our, our downtown area. And, and then finally, what a, what a remarkable thing that I already know almost everybody by first name at the New Home Depot. Because that's, because that's how much money I personally spend there and, and the Housing Authority definitely rates their pro status. So anyway, great community to live in.
Thank you. Counsel Doughty?
I'd just like to give a shout out to the Impact Fee Committee as well. Those are some dedicated folks from our community and they spend a lot of time and we pay them zero money for that. I see one in the crowd right now, so I certainly appreciate their effort. And on that, while I was in there, we did talk about the ratio between housing and commercial and industrial. And I'm going to try and, that was my foreshadowing to Ray Lynn to be ready. If she has those, do you have those numbers handy that you shared with us in there? And so with the new commercial coming in, that percentage and ratio is, is going down so that we can offset the residential and bring in more tax money from commercial, not from a residence?
Yeah, from, I got the information from the county assessor. And so commercials, 35% of the taxable value and residential's 65%. And then there is a very small percentage that's agriculture, so.
So it is dropping and going down, which is great, which hopefully helps with the levy rate, which keeps the residence taxes low. So I appreciate everyone's effort. Thank you.
Counsel Stoddick?
Now, if we can do something with school bonds, that would really be good. Anyway, just follow up. I showed you folks a statuette of Carrie French, who was killed in the Iraqi war here several years ago. And there's, there's a monument to recognize all the ladies up in Boise. And, and what we tried to do at the Vet Center was to do something that, you know, was in her hometown. And we got together and we've got the money all put together now. We're not even short. We've got it all put together. We had a surprise presentation for the whole family Sunday at 4:30 at the Veterans Hall. And we had six statuettes, which we passed out to the family. And they're just thrilled to death that they're going to, there is going to be a statue here locally in Caldwell. And as I mentioned before in our previous council meeting, the statuette will, it'll be a life-size version of what she looked at. I mean, the, the detail in it is just amazing. It'll be ready in, in January and because of the winter months, we'll probably have it installed in front of the hall probably in June sometime. So it, they were, but they were really appreciative that there's going to be something here in her hometown that's going to recognize her. So it went, it went quite well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much for reporting. That is exciting because yeah, she's, she was an amazing, amazing lady. So, and I'll just kind of echo, kind of appreciate Counsel Williams and Counsel Allgood's comments that sometimes when you're in the middle of your success, you don't realize it. And I know there's a lot of people out there complaining about it within the city, but from the outside looking in, it's nothing but great. And I hear so much across, not only across the valley, but across the entire country on that. So doing great things. You just take that 30,000 view foot or foot, 30,000 foot view and it is, we're killing it. So doing some great, great things, super exciting. And for another hotel, it'd be great. It just shows that we do need those that come in. That's going to provide a great benefit. So that is all that I have. So we are going to move into executive session, however, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion that we move into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206D for consideration of records that are exempt from public disclosure.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion from Counsel Denberg, a second from Counsel Williams to go into executive session. So that voting is open at this time?
I didn't know we were going to.
Won't work. Okay, so votes are cast, so we'll go ahead and roll call Counsel Stoddick. So it's unanimous, and Counsel Stoddick says yes to keep it unanimous. So, okay. So I'll just take a couple of minutes, then we're going into executive session. Thank you to everybody that came this evening. We appreciate your attendance. You'll have a good evening. everybody that came this evening. We appreciate your attendance. You have a good evening.